So I call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. I'll say that in accordance with an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodation signed by Governor Baker on July 16th, 2022, which extended the suspension of certain provisions of the open meeting law. This meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings.
Don't turn the chair over.
Welcome, everybody.
Is video one?
Ms. McGovern. Oh, yeah, there you go. So we're going to begin with public input. If anybody has anything they would like to bring up, please unmute yourself or identify yourself in some way. Hearing none. We'll move on. We have our student report. I saw Cassandra Fitz is here today. So Cassandra, if you want to unmute yourself and provide the student report, we would love it.
But I can't hear them.
Okay. Um, so for some notable academic matters, midterms have been completed. Um, they were started on Tuesday, the 17th, and they went until Friday, the 20th. The second quarter also ended on the 20th, and guidance will be coming in for course selection for juniors soon. I'm not sure the exact date. For fine arts, we don't have anything new notorious. We'll still be attending like a competition in Troy, New York on February 4th. For athletics, the Unified Bocce Match is on Saturday, the 28th, and North Reading will be hosting. There is a track meet tomorrow. And for the D4 state title, the girls' team for track got first at the state relays, and the boys were runner-ups. We have an early release on Friday for professional development. Eco Team's clothing trade just opened and is on Main Street in the high school. The Charles E. Jones Ceremony is on February 10th. The Teacher of the Month is Ms. Verdonk. Guidance Breakfast will be today through Tuesday, the 31st. And for some club stuff, the Model UN Team is going on our annual Harvard Model UN trip. There was a ski trip to Lune for Adventure Club. I think it already happened. And the location of the Peru trip has been changed to the Alps, so Germany, Switzerland, France, and Italy. And there will be a Spanish immersion trip to Costa Rica this year. And for my student work report, we don't really have anything new going on because of midterms just happening. So I was going to talk a little bit about, um, I'm going on the Harvard Model UN trip. So I was going to talk a little bit about some of the work preparations for that. Um, let me pull that. Is there any way I could present that?
Sure, you should be able to. A stop does allow you to. If not, I can.
Okay. Okay. So our country assigned to our school this year is the Holy See or the Vatican. So I'm in the legal committee. So our topic is cyber warfare and cyber crimes. So this is a position paper. And for a position paper, you just cover like the position that your country takes on your given topic. So in my paper, I discuss some of the Vatican's positions and beliefs in regards to cyber warfare and cyber crimes. So, um, basically just general avoidance of warfare and the maintenance of peace. So we leave for our trip on Thursday at 1 o'clock, I believe, and it goes until Sunday.
Excellent. So on the, on the Model UN then, so the, the position paper that you essentially wrote there, did you pull that from actual Vatican statements?
Yeah, so some of it comes from Vatican statements. Some of it is from the CIA World Factbook created by the US. A lot of it is most, it's mostly from statements by the Vatican articles about events in the Vatican and such.
And, and without reading the whole statement, I mean, it sounds like, were they, were they specific about cyber or were you more taking warfare stances?
So there's, um, our specific topic for the legal committee is in regards to cyber warfare and cyber crimes. So I address some of, um, some events in the Vatican in relation to cyber warfare and cyber crimes. For example, there have been cases of like hackers or agencies attempting to take down Vatican websites or infiltrate Vatican information. So I talked a bit about that and how the Vatican would benefit from certain legislature that could prevent cyber warfare and cyber crimes.
Interesting. Anybody else comments or questions? And I'm, I'm going to plan to attend the Bocce tournament this weekend too, so looking forward to that. Okay, well, there's nothing else. Thank you, Cassandra, for the report. And as always, you can stay as long as you like or leave if you have other things to do. So thank you. Okay, moving on, we're going to go right to new business. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Daly. I believe we're going to recognize Stephen Harterey for 29 years. So, Dr. Daly?
29 plus. So I am very happy to have Mr. Harterey here with us tonight. There is, um, you know, there's a lot of people that, that come into our district and work with us. And we love, you know, working with all our employees. Steve is a, is an institution. He is a, a North Reading High graduate. He has been someone that I've, I've known my entire time here. And, you know, he's kind of an important guy because if, if Steve doesn't do his job, none of us get paid. So he's kind of a, a pretty important guy. But, you know, the joke I'm going to be making, I think, all week is that, you know, Steve often is the first person to know about some of the maternity leaves in our district, sometimes before even the, the husbands know. Steve is the first call and he gets all the information to our teachers about retirement, about everything to do with human resources. And he's just really a great guy and he's been a great friend. And I, I wanted to share a couple of moments. Ann Lundell, who's here with us tonight, my executive assistant, helped prepare me with some of the history because she's worked with Steve for more than 20 years as well. So Steve grew up in North Reading. He went to the Little School. He went to the junior high and he graduated from NRHS in 1974. He played four years of football, hockey, and baseball at NRHS. He was a winning pitcher for two state baseball titles in the same year, Division One and Division Two. He got his business management degree from North Adams State College, was drafted into the Chicago Cubs minor leagues. He played for one year and then a year with Canadian League. His mother was a secretary at the Little and Bachelor Schools. And he was employed as an accountant for several companies, but he was hired by Superintendent Francis O'Donoghue on August 23rd, 1993, and worked for North Reading for over 29 years for six superintendents. Dr. O'Donoghue, Dr. Trottin, Dr. Mannanville, Kathy Willis, John Bernard, and myself. And also three business managers, Roger Young, Carl Nelson, and now Michael Connolly. And today is his birthday and he's here, uh, his wife Gail, and I think some of his family is here with us as well. So more than anything else, I thought it was very important to, um, to bring Steve here just so we could give him some proper honor and recognition. We are having a, a retirement gathering for him this week, which is certainly a bittersweet moment for us. And more than anything else, Stephen, you've been a great friend. And you've been a good softball coach to me and to Dan, giving us some great advice over the years. And we're certainly going to miss you and we just want to thank you for everything you've done for us. I don't know if anyone else wanted to.
Mr. Connolly?
Excellent. Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Yes.
All right, great. So, yeah, I wanted to just take the opportunity to congratulate Steve Harterey for just an exceptional, uh, you know, 29 plus, over 29 and a half years career here in North Reading Public Schools. It has been an absolute pleasure to work with Steve for over 10 and a half, 10 and a half years here in North Reading. He has been just an extremely dedicated and committed, devoted employee of the district for many, many years. And he has absolutely mastered his craft of, of processing payroll. And as a business manager, um, I can't tell you how fortunate it has been to work with someone like Steve over these last 10 and a half years and who, I've been doing this for about 20 years. And just to, to know, and that my time here with Steve, I have never once had to worry about payroll and everything that he, he does. And it's an extremely difficult job. There's a lot involved. There's a lot of reports. There's a lot of state reports, retirement reports that have to get done accurately and on time. And Steve had, just is absolutely has just mastered that craft. And he takes a great deal of pride in the work. And that has been what I've remembered most, will have appreciated most about Mr. Harterey and will, will certainly miss the most is that his, his pride in the work and his devotion to, to North Reading. And Steve takes pride in balancing everything to the penny. And, um, that is extremely difficult to do. And I think that speaks to just how, how much he cares about the job and how, how much he, the time and, and the skill that went into doing his job. And then he would, he would balance everything to the penny. And not a lot of people take, take that extra effort and detail to do that. And Steve, Steve took pride in doing that. So it's just been an absolute pleasure, um, to work with Mr. Harterey. He's an exceptional payroll specialist, payroll accountant. But more than that, I think Steve also realized that, you know, the job was more than numbers. The job was more than, than processing payroll. The job was about, about people. And he also enjoyed meeting with employees, onboarding employees, taking pride in assisting employees with their retirement applications and making sure there was no errors and everything was on time. And everything was going to go very, very smoothly for employees, whether it be enrollment in health insurance or, um, onboarding or retirement or whatever it involved. He gave the employee the extra attention and the extra time that, that they deserved. And that was important to him. And, and not a lot of people that I've had to work with would take that extra effort and recognize that it was more than the numbers, that it was, it was really about the people. And Steve, Steve recognized that and he did that and he did that very, very well for this community, for this school district for over 29 and a half years. And we're certainly going to be, um, very, he'll be very, very missed. It's going to be, he's going to be very, very hard to replace. And the other thing that I've extremely appreciated about Mr. Harterey is it's been just as important to him to kind of pass this torch and pass this transition off to, in very good hands. And he's been work, very hard at work over the last six to eight weeks, transitioning the new employee that started just, um, just before the holidays to make sure that, um, when he leaves, that it's in good hands. And that's something that, um, again, just, I think speaks to just the type of person that Mr. Harterey is and how much he cares about North Reading above all else. And I, I just extremely have, you know, want to thank him for that. I enjoyed our conversations. I consider him a close friend. We've, we've talked a lot. And I, I just can't thank him enough for his time in North Reading, not only with me over the last 10 and a half years, but we've been extremely fortunate for his dedicated years of service. He'll be very missed. And, um, I really hope that he takes the time that he deserves with his family. And he, I know he has, I believe he has five grandchildren, um, you know, two, two children. And I know he's going to enjoy, um, the time with his wife, his, his very close, close-knit family. And I know he's already booked to start babysitting for his grandchildren. So I, I hope he deserves that and takes that time because he's, he has earned it and he deserves that, that time. And I, I just want to thank him for his, his years of service. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Steve. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Mr. Friedman, I see your hand raised.
That was more of just a reaction to say, to say, uh, congratulations. Well deserved. You know, when, when, when a district gets really great people, it's always tough to see them go. But the, the thing that resonates with me is the fact that you take the time to transition this to another team, to, uh, other people. I mean, it's really, it's, it's a phenomenal gesture. Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I, I will also jump into these. So thank, thank you so much for all the years. 29 plus years, I can't imagine, but, um, thank you for the time. A few quick things. Number one, I would love to hear from you. What are your future endeavors other than babysitting? And, yeah, do you have any advice for us after 29 years?
Um, well, I, I'm, I'm going to kind of relax. My wife and I are taking a trip to Louisiana down in New Orleans to go to a wedding. That'll be our first adventure. And I believe that we do have a few things on our plate. I know my wife would like to go to Paris, so I think that's on the docket. And, uh, and obviously Hawaii is where I want to go to a luau. So we do have a few things. I, I definitely want to see my grandchildren. I have five of them. And I love them all dearly and I'm going to help out with some, some babysitting that they, they would desperately need. And of course I love, they're from five years old to six months old, so that's going to be, you know, wonderful. I really appreciate, um, the opportunity to work for North Reading all those years. I've worked with a lot of, um, as I said, six superintendents and two administrative assistants and three business managers that are all dedicated to, to, um, first thing come first is, is the children, is the students. And that's what we're all built to do. On my end, I'm built to make sure that everybody gets paid as Dr. Daly had mentioned, but making everybody comfortable in, in the situations that they don't have too much knowledge on. And, and I've learned a lot and I just appreciate being able to work with North Reading this long.
Thank you.
I want to thank everybody. I can't make, say everybody by name because I'm sure I'm going to miss something. But, you know, between the administration and the faculty, to the, to the secretaries, to the custodians, to the, all the staff, everybody that I've been involved with. Every day is a learning experience. And they do say that, you know, if you love your job, you never worked a day in your life. And I kind of feel that way sometimes. And, um, I've been very blessed.
Thank you, sir. I, I will just say, I know nothing of what you do, but I have negotiated a couple of the most recent union contracts. I know that a lot of what we were trying to do in some of those was simplifying the payroll. Because, you know, Michael even just explaining what you have to go through sometimes is, I mean, I think everybody, everybody does in a school district how different it can be, the payroll job. And so there's just so many different benefits and, you know, when you're out of school for this or that. And again, just like Michael has said, you know, we don't, we don't make the, make errors on it. But I remember in some of the union contracts, he was saying, we have to simplify this because the fact that we have backend people that know exactly what they're doing, we can't rely on that forever. You know, we have to make it, you know, that it's not Steve who knows what he's been doing for 29 years, so he won't make a mistake. We have to have other people be able to do it. So I do appreciate a little bit from behind the scenes, the complexity of that. And I'll just say that I very much am glad that you did baseball, not soccer, because Dr. Daly and I coached against each other, currently undefeated against him. So I'm glad you're not giving him advice on soccer.
No. But thank you. It's, it was, uh, yeah, there was some, some, um, trying episodes when we went to go to make it simplified, to do bi-weekly. And, you know, a two-word turnaround was kind of short notice, but, you know, it got done and everybody was paid and everybody was happy. And everybody understands now. And, and to make it simplified for everybody is, is going forward is, is just relatively easy for everybody else. So that was the goal and I think that's where we've gotten to. And, uh, and I, and I said to Dr. Daly and I also said to Michael Connolly that even though I am retiring, if in fact you do need my services somewhere down the line to help out with, you know, the, a new contract or the new salary tables or something that my replacement needs help, I am just a phone call away.
Thank, thank you for that. I mean, we need building-based subs and bus drivers too, if you ever get bored.
I did drive a bus one summer and it's too big for me. Sorry. It's just not going to happen.
We appreciate the time. Any other thoughts? I don't see anybody here. I see your family here, which is nice.
Sorry, we do have a gift for you, Steve. I don't, do you have it there or do you?
Yes, I do. I haven't.
It's something that Ann Lundell, who's worked with you a very long time, put a lot of thought and effort into picking out something for you.
Okay, well.
This is a gift from the school committee.
Let me open it and, and take a look. Oh, look at this. Wow, I am very surprised. Oh, wow. This is a, a plaque. Well, and it says, uh, "Award to Stephen Harterey in grateful appreciation of your 29 years of dedication to the faculty and staff of the North Reading Public Schools for January of 2023."
Congrats as well. So Derek, you want to unmute?
Thanks to Bumpa. Congratulations. We love you.
Hi, Amelia. Hi, Amelia. Hi, Dylan. Hi, Brianna. Thank you.
We love you. We're proud of you.
Love you too.
Can't wait for you to babysit.
I'll be there soon.
Thank you.
Hi, Bumpa.
It's wonderful. Well, thank you very much again. Very much appreciate it. And when, when is your last day officially?
February 3rd.
February 3rd.
Two weeks. I'm going on a payday. What can I tell you? That's great. And Steve gave me some good sticky notes for the next round of contract negotiations to make things even better. So we'll be, we'll be putting those into, into our conversations as well. Thanks for everything, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on, we will go to the DECA overnight trip. Is there, if he, Nicole Pierce here, I think the advisor of DECA.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you hear me okay?
I can.
All right. Um, so December 15th, the DECA club members went to, um, our district competition where we competed against other schools in District Four, which is the district we're in. It was held at the Royal Plaza Trade Center in Marlboro. And from there, six students placed in the top six to move on to the State Career Development Conference. So that's going to be held March 9th through March 11th. So we would be leaving school on a Thursday. After school, we'll go directly into Boston, stay overnight for two nights. So the kids would have to miss that Friday of school. And there, what they do is they compete in the same event that they, they competed in districts, but against other, other students across the state. So it's been, we've gone, this is going to be my fourth year taking the kids. We stay at the Boston Copley Marriott. They never leave that, that area. They go shopping, they go out to eat, they of course compete. They have a huge award ceremony and it's, it's quite the experience and the kids, um, usually have a, a good time. So we'll go, but I'm looking into the, um, in the past, I've just taken my own car and the kids have come, come with me, but now we, my car can't have seven of us. So I'm looking into the school van. So I've been in touch with Dave Johnson and securing that. And as far as the cost, it's about five. Um, I'm still trying to nail down exactly how much it's going to be. Five to $600 and the club is gonna, is going to pay for probably half of it. And then the student is responsible for the other, the other half.
That's great. So a couple of quick questions, and if anybody else has questions, please let me know. How many, how many people competed at the first round? And I know six are moving on. And how does that compare to previous years of how many people participated? How many people go on to this level?
So we started, um, so this is our fourth year in Kewaboy. One of the years was our COVID year, so it was all hybrid. It was completely different. The kids competed by sending in videos of themselves and taking online tests. It was, it was just a different beast altogether. So when we started the club, we had 12. The next year, we went to 24. And the next year, um, we had 85. And this year, we have 148 members. So all 148, we took three buses full to Marlboro. Had a lot of North Reading faculty and parents help out with the judging as well. And, um, so it sounds like a large number, like why, why don't we have more than six? But a lot are under, um, underclassmen and people who are just brand new to the club. And, um, I mean, for me, when I was first learning about it, it was, it can be very overwhelming. So now some kids have it, they've done it a few times now. You know, they know what to expect. And those are the kids that we see moving on, um, to the next round.
No, I, I'll be honest. I didn't, I didn't think anything negative of it. I mean, 12 to 148 in four years is pretty impressive, honestly. And just, and I think it's great for students that maybe aren't athletic or aren't into the arts to have opportunities still. And that's what we're always trying for is opportunities for clubs and involvement. Because, you know, there's a social aspect of it as well. So I think it's a great avenue. And can you, my only other question is like, can you give maybe an example or two of like the types of tests or the types of events that, that the kids are competing in?
Yeah, of course. Um, so the, when the kids first come up to me, they're like, what is this? What do we do? So I say, well, it's kind of like academic to Catholic, but it's business. And they're still looking at me like, well, what do we do? So I try to explain it like a track meet. And, you know, if each of us has our own event and we're, we're racing or competing against other students from other schools in that same event. Um, and then we, we get our score and that's where the placing comes. So the events could be, um, the core events are marketing. And under that, it could be anything from sports and entertainment marketing to marketing communications to fashion and apparel. It's kind of quick service, uh, quick serve food, marketing. It's quite a range. Another one is finance. We'll find personal finance, accounting. The other one is hospitality. So the kids will have, um, try like restaurant lodging. So for instance, if they have, they might get a scenario, actually, let me go back. So the, what they're graded on is they'll have, they'll have a test portion. And so that, the test that they take, that score is one-third of their final score. And then the other two-thirds is they go in front of a judge, and that's what we did in Marlboro. They go in front of the judge and they get a scenario. It could be like, you know, you own a fast food restaurant and you're go, opening up in a mall. You know, and there's competitors in that same food court. How do you market yourself to, you know, to get the customers to come, come to you? And the kids will get a certain amount of time to prep for that. So they don't see it ahead of time. They see it on that day. They, um, get 10 to 15 minutes to prepare and then they go and pitch their idea. And before they go in, they get, um, they call them performance indicators. They're kind of like a rubric. So they know what they need to hit in order to get their highest score. So then those two combined, then that's how they, they place.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions?
I have to mention, there are other, um, other, I guess, ways to compete. Some, there's the option of writing a paper. There's an option of, um, coming up with like a research. But because we're so new, we kind of just funnel everyone into this more simple model until we get, you know, we kind of get more comfortable as a, as a club. And, um, the last kids will ask, well, how do I prepare for this? And there are a lot of resources through DECA that I point them to. It's online. We do some of it in our, um, in our morning meetings. But primarily, it's what they're getting out of the business curriculum at North Reading High School. So we see a lot of the more juniors and seniors. Although last year I had a freshman place and as a sophomore now, he placed first in his particular event. So it's, it, it's pretty impressive what these kids come up with.
That's great. Well, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for them. I'm fully in support of it. I can have a motion to approve the overnight trip.
Move to approve the DECA overnight trip.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Diana and a second by Jeff. Any more discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Diana?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Rich? Rich, did you say aye? That's an aye. And I'm an aye as well. Pass this five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Daly.
Look, just, just for a moment, just wanted to take a moment to thank you, uh, Ms. Pierce.
Look, just, just for a moment, just wanted to take a moment to thank you, uh, Ms. Pierce for presenting tonight and for your leadership with the club. And just to recognize also, she's also a classroom teacher and she's our curriculum leader for the entrepreneurship business department. She does a wonderful job. And so the the real world experience, but also the efforts you've put in to really grow this club and your, your programs. Says a lot. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Moving on, we have the Chartwell's Food Service Program here. So clearly you have no food to eat when we're virtual, but I'll turn it over to looks like maybe Chris and Anna McGovern.
Yep. Good evening, everyone.
Rachel, what happened to my sound?
Anna, let me start it and I'll call you to unmute. Well, good evening, everybody. I can't believe it's already January.
Call that number again, yeah.
It's already January. It feels like the school started two weeks ago. But, uh, so we, we came to, uh, tonight to give you a little program update and where we stand this year and how things are going. Again, next slide, Mike. We're going to go through some program developments, some highlights, uh, some results.
On the screen.
For, uh, next, and then also, uh, questions and discussion. Next slide. Ooh, there's a big one. All right. Is that, uh, there you go. First of all, I just wanted to, we actually are honoring school boards for January. So congratulations and thanks for all your hard work. January is a school board, school committee month, recognition month. And, uh, Anna, I know you mentioned that there's no food, but Anna and, uh, a student, seventh grader, Megan Russell, helped put some snacks and cookies together along with a, a nice thank you card. So unfortunately, we'll have to get to you later. But, uh, again, uh, thanks for everything you guys do, uh, for the students and the community. Next. Few, few highlights. Uh, we're continuing to service free meals. Back to school is normal. Uh, last year was very similar. This year is even more normal. We're, we're, we're rolling out some more programs. We're, we're getting some, uh, some, running some, uh, student engagement events. And, uh, uh, the challenges we face so far are just, you know, amount of students we're serving. We're probably up by 30% from our pre-COVID time. So it's a lot of meals we're serving, uh, the cafeterias. We also have, uh, we're dealing with supply chain challenges still, but we're managing it well below inflation rates, which is good. But, uh, we continue to battle some of that, uh, here and there. Uh, and we're, we're managing, managing that as we go through, uh, on a weekly basis. We did provide some new environment signage at all the schools. We'll show you some pictures of that. We actually have a new nutrition menu program. We, we, um, we receive, we got new dietetic support, uh, once a week now, uh, to help Anna and her team with, uh, growing allergies and, and, um, menu development. Uh, and we also ordered the Discovery Kitchen cards, which these cards are like tasting cards that we roll out to sample new foods, uh, throughout the district. And we, we've, uh, earmarked one event per month. Last month, we did, uh, an event at, uh, high school, middle school. We tasted, uh, some, the theme for December was, I think, spicy. So we, we tasted a couple of menu items for, uh, for that month. I believe it was a, uh, black bean, a hot black bean side dish along with a, uh, cilantro lime, um, a coleslaw.
Coleslaw.
Yep. And then, uh, um, we also actually, uh, received some marketing culinary support where we had our regional chef and marketing person help us out for the event and with the, uh, some of the new marketing concepts we're rolling out. So next slide. Here's some, a picture of some of the signage. Um, again, each school received certain signage. There were really, oh. There you go. So there, there's, uh, there's signage that ties into the cafeterias, uh, makes it fun. There's different age, age level groups. So you'll see the, uh, top, um, signage is more high school, middle school and below is more the elementary level, uh, which it kind of creates a nice, uh, bright theme for the cafeterias, brings it up a notch. And, uh, it was, it's nice to add some of the, the new touches from our environments program. Next slide. Nutrition updates. We did roll out, actually, we do have a, a dietitian that comes every Tuesday, works with Anna. Uh, we rolled out the new, new menu program. We added gluten-free menu. And we also added this flyer here, which you see here, which we provided on our, on the website and also, uh, to parents to, if they have any questions regarding nutrition, we created a new website that it goes to three dietitians, myself, Anna, for anything that comes up, any questions, concerns, support, resources. We haven't seen a lot of, of, uh, emails yet, but it's nice to have that support there, uh, in case a parent or student has the need, uh, to ask questions or needs a resource. Next slide. This is a picture of the Discovery Card Kits. We have two of these. They're a nice cards. They have hot plates on them. They've got, uh, you know, a video monitor, kind of highlighting what we're sampling and some nutrition information about that. And we have two side tables that go along with it. These are totally portable. They're stored right now at the high school. We've got two carts that are easily, they actually, they actually, um, combine, wrap up to one piece, a wheel, wheel on a truck very easily. Uh, and it's a, it's a nice way to showcase some of the new menu items we're doing. As you see here, we've got, uh, this is the lime cilantro and the, uh, um, the black bean, um, side dish. Some more pictures of the event. The students seem to be very, very excited about it. Uh, very, the participation was really good. And, uh, it was nice because they voted, you know, what they liked the best and they liked both. They liked both the cilantro slaw and the beans. And we actually put it on the menu the following Friday. So again, that's key. When we, when we sample the new foods and recipes, we like to get them on the menu as quick as possible so they see that we're following through with what they, uh, would like to see. Next slide. All right. See if we can cue this video. This is a video of one of the students. So you can hear this. This, this one student came up two or three times. So, but we, we got a lot of feedback from the students and, uh, after we, we actually did a little, um, discussion before we sampled it, we told them all about it. We talked about nutrition education about it. And then we also, um, went around to the tables to get some feedback and how they liked it. So it was a nice event. We look forward to, uh, this monthly event to really drive student engagement. Next slide. This is a little bit about results, uh, so far. And I think that, um, the participation slide, it continues to grow. Uh, I think we're, you know, we're up by 1% um, overall from last year. But last year was free too, but, uh, from prior year, I think it's, uh, 65% uh, participation, which is, which is great. We did see a drop a little bit at the high school by 4%, but I think that was due, and I'm, I'm guessing here, but we had a lot of illness, um, in the different districts. So our, our participation, average daily attendance was down. So that could have played a role in December's participation, but no, things are going strong. It's, it's a challenge just to serve as many meals as we're doing, but the Anna and her team are doing a great job. I'm getting meals out and, and providing the, uh, variety that we provide. Next slide, just as a snapshot of our financial results, we show the first column is just year to date, December. And the second column is what we were projected to be at the end of the year. So again, you know, with the added reimbursements, USDA state funding, uh, the amount of meals we're serving, our, our return is pretty strong that we can invest back into the program. You know, as we take a look at the facilities, what needs improvements, what we need to, um, invest into the, um, food service areas. Uh, we've, we've got that luxury now of actually having some, some surplus in the revolving account. The food cost is running a little high still. I think it's at, uh, you shrink down a little bit there. Uh, we're at, uh, 44% um, year to date. Uh, we expect, uh, let's go back, expect to actually drop a little bit, control that. Um, usually the beginning of the year, we invest in a lot of, uh, inventory, but, uh, Anna's been managing it tightly. Uh, and we've, I think inflation on food is between 11 and 12%. And we're managing it probably around four or five percent increase from, from prior year, which is good. Uh, so, so we'll continue to work hard on, on managing product costs and, and our labor costs. But overall, our, our meals are, our service meals are doing great. And we've got a, um, a, a healthy surplus that we can invest back.
Why does that do that?
We, we probably have it on the phone and your computer, is my guess. Here's, uh, just some of the, uh, January is our new theme. We're actually doing Great American Road Trip, where we actually will be sampling different, um, uh, menus from different parts of the country. Uh, and that'll be one of our events as well on the Discovery Kitchen cart. February be smart snacking, uh, you know, healthier snacks was our focus. Uh, March is plant power, which is, you know, protein-based, uh, um, a plant-based protein, uh, that we'll infuse into the menus. And then February, uh, Mood Boost, which is more of an elementary program, uh, that we're rolling out. So, um, I know that, uh, as far as, uh, the mood boost, I believe Anna and the dietitian are going to be rolling that out in February, uh, to the elementary schools, uh, to do some, um, some student engagement at the elementary level. Uh, upcoming events, I heard about the Bachi tournament that's coming up this weekend, which is great. And I know that there's some food service, uh, involved with that as well as the, uh, the Drama Fest. Maybe Anna, I don't know if you can talk about this if you're off mute and you. Let's give it a shot.
Can you hear me?
Yes, perfect.
Okay, well, I can hear it.
Well. Anna? No. I'm sure she's, there's good information. Anna?
Yeah, we can't hear you, Anna.
No. All right, well, um, so, the other event that's coming up, uh, which is not listed here is we do have our, our dietitian, our regional dietitian, Sarah Patterson, coming down to work with Anna and the whole team to go through, um, allergy train, allergen training. Uh, we go through it every year, but this is a more in-depth allergy training, uh, as well as getting certification for the whole team. Uh, so it goes, it goes a step beyond our regular allergy training. So, I believe that's coming up on a professional development day this Friday, coming Friday. So the 27th, I think. So, uh,
Yeah, that's correct.
Sarah will be working with Anna on that, um, to get all the, all the food service team certified in allergy training. So, which is a, it's a great thing. So that's all I had. But questions for me or?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. So Neil from the transcript has his hand raised, so I will go to Neil first. Neil, question? Neil, do you have a question? You want to unmute? You can't hear us? If you want to type the question in the, you can feel free to type it as well. Oh, wait, we don't have typing, do we? Yes, we do.
Yeah, we should be able to.
Just enable it for you. Yeah.
Well, Neil's typing this question. This is Michael Calm. I just want to, um, thank, um, Chris and Anna for putting together the presentation and for their, their work over the last, um, few years. Certainly, you know, we're certainly back to more normal times this year, which is great to see. And we're trying to, you know, do a lot of the things that we started to do with, you know, way back a few years ago, just before the pandemic student choice. And we're, we're bringing that back with some Discovery Kitchen programs to try to get student feedback and keep, keep the students engaged in, in the program. And I'm, I'm really pleased to see the, the dietitian and, um, you know, added and increased enhanced access to, to that information and that, that, um, that resource that's now available to, to the, your parents and to the community. Um, and I'm, I'm hopeful that's going to, you know, help improve healthy options, um, gluten-free options, you know, folks with specific, you know, dietary needs. You'll allow them to feel, you know, comfortable participating in the program and, um, taking part in, in school breakfast and lunch. So I think that's a big enhancement that we're looking forward to to growing over the course of the, the next, um, the next half of the, this school year. But certainly, um, you know, the, the, the food service program really over the last few years, as we all know, has done a lot. Um, and it had to do a lot of things differently during the pandemic. And now, now we're just very happy to have students kind of there eating, um, in, in normal times in, in lunch, um, engaging in, in conversation and, and enjoying, enjoying the lunch program. The staff, I did want to just, you know, thank the staff as well. I thought I saw Wendy Burt on the line. I don't know if she's still, still here, but the food service staff is, um, has done an exceptional job who are, you know, they, they work with Chartwell's, the food service staff is our North Reading employees. And they continue to just, to just do, do a great job for the program. They're very, very dedicated to their, to their crafts and to making sure that, um, everything happens smoothly in terms of the operation. And then there were, when there are specific needs, um, I think many of them, and we've heard this from parents, do try to certainly go above and beyond to, um, you know, with Chartwell's and Anna's leadership to, to provide the information that is needed, um, you know, when, when there is a specific, you know, dietary need. So I, I just want to thank them as well. Thank you.
The question that came up, I see is that, um, can you explain reimbursements? Uh, I think, again, Neil, the, the reimbursements I speak of are the USDA state funding that we receive for every full service meal that we serve that meets all the components on the nutrition guidelines. We get a certain dollar amount for every meal sold. Uh, and since meals are free, uh, that's the funding we get for those free meals is from the state and the USDA to, um, support the school, school community for serving nutritional meals.
And, and I will, I will add in there, Chris. I think, I think this started during COVID because people were worried about making sure everybody had meals and a lot of states, it's gone away, but in Massachusetts, they, there was sort of a shift. And I, from my understanding, this year they found that a lot of times the healthiest meal that students were eating were the meals at school. And so the legislature passed, you know, some bills to keep the free lunches because there were so many more students having the meals and, you know, it was one of the healthiest meals they were eating. So we certainly appreciate it. And you see the numbers are up from it. So, yeah, yeah. And then discounts, um, and then, and then again, as, as Rich pointed out, some students, students can buy extras as well. And discounts, I don't know, Chris, do you want to?
Discounts and rebates are, are, are purchasing power. So we actually, uh, get, um, some volume allowance discounts from all of our vendors that are required to go back to the school community. So since we're a large company, we get, um, substantial, um, negotiated, uh, surplus discounts that are credited back to your program.
And that, that is one of the benefits of working with an organization like Chartwell's is we do get, that, that purchasing power and that bargaining power with, with those big, big larger discounts.
That's helped us through the, you know, the inflation too a little bit.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, I don't know, no one has a crystal ball in terms of what's going to happen in the future. Certainly the, the USDA's, you know, universal free meals program for, for those two years. And then Massachusetts signing on to kind of supplement the free meals, um, this year has been significant benefit in terms of the revenue. And I think it certainly helped obviously the participation. The participation has kind of stayed there, if not grown, as Chris indicated earlier throughout these, these three years, when we've been in this kind of free, free mail, um, program. So we, we've, um, certainly are hopeful that we're now going to be able to kind of invest back in the program with some equipment. We've done that with a lot of equipment already in the carts and some new, some new signage. We've done that with a lot of equipment already in the carts and some new, some new signage. And, you know, we're, we're hopeful that, you know, that will continue. But again, we'll just, we'll have to pay very close attention in the next four or five months what, what Massachusetts is doing.
We usually hear, we usually hear between June and July what the next year is going to look like. But I think since they provided it this year, there's a good chance it'll, it'll be next year too. But we'll keep our, our eyes and ears peeled on, on what comes from Desi on that.
I think, I think one nice thing was even before the free meals, the year before COVID hit, we did get to a balanced budget anyways, which was nice so that, you know, because when I started on the school committee years ago, there was a deficit. So we had to fund, you know, a portion of the school meals from it. You see, there's actually a surplus now that can be, you know, invested back into the program. But it used to be that out of each annual budget, we had to actually set aside money. I think before I was on, it was about a hundred thousand dollar deficit some years. And so, you know, it's great. And, and I just think from looking aside, I mean, I think it's really nice. I, I, I mean, I was fortunate enough to work with negotiating the, the last union contract with the, with the women, with the people that work in the department. But I think it's a nice combination of working with, you know, a private business in Chartwell's and, you know, unions within, within our district. So that we have, you know, kind of a nice combination there, which I think works really well for North Reading. And I don't, I don't know if that's common everywhere where they bring in a private company and the staff, you know, at, at the school. But I think it's a pretty nice combination here.
We have, we have both. We manage both. So it's very common.
Yeah. And in, in terms of questions, I mean, I, I mean, some of my questions were answered already, supply chain. But one I had seen, I saw on the community connection page and I couldn't find it earlier. I think somebody had put my name in there, so I just happened to see it. But somebody was saying like, if they had concerns or any, you know, suggestions for meals. Is it, should we direct them to the northwritingnutrition@compass-usa.com email? Is that where?
That'll work. Some, some ideas. Yep, definitely. Yep.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Neil, I see your hand's still up, but I don't see any more comments coming in. So we're good. Anybody else? Okay, we don't need a motion or anything. We appreciate you guys coming. Sorry for the technical difficulties, Anna, and I will definitely go pick up my food at some point. So they, so I will come by for it.
What, what we'll do too is we'll invite you to the next Discovery Kitchen event, if someone can make it down.
There you go.
See that, that would be great. So.
Yeah, I believe I may try to have the treats that Anna's prepared, delivered tomorrow. So if we can make that happen for each of you, we'll, we'll make that happen. So great.
That's sweet. Noel?
I just wanted to say, count me in for the next Discovery Kitchen. And I, I appreciate really hearing about the variety that you're introducing. It's like something I'm really passionate about, nutrition and food for kids. And so seeing them, you know, trying out really interesting things like coleslaw and, you know, different flavors is, is fantastic. So I think that's great. I, I've, you know, heard it said before that people would say frozen pizza kind of checks the box for nutritional requirements for school lunches. And to see this kind of stuff happening in our schools, I think it's great. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I mean, I, I will, I will just add that my, I have two at the middle school and one in elementary. And I, my sixth grader, I, I, even though it's free lunches, I pay, I have to keep funding because he gets two lunches every day now. Like literally, and again, he loves taunting, taunting his sister who's at the elementary because she has like two choices a day. And he loves telling her how many different choices he has. So it's great.
It's great to hear.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Dr. Daly.
Just wanted to quickly thank to, to Chris and to Anna for their presentation and for all the work that they've done to Wendy and for the whole team for what they do every day. I get to get down there a lot. I get to eat lunch. I get to see the kids going through. It really is something they're excited about. And, you know, I've, I've watched them work very closely with parents with food allergies or other concerns. And they really do care about trying to provide the best supports for our kids at our schools and they work very hard. And if there's ever anything that needs to be improved, they really get right to it and, and work hard to, to make it better for the future. So they're working hard every day on that. And I want to thank them for that. So.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Good night. Okay, moving on. NRPS 2025 update. Dr. Daly, turn it over to you.
Yes, how are you? Thank you. Going to share my screen. So I was able to share a recent article in the transcript that touched on some of these updates. I just wanted to give the committee sort of a mid-year for this school year where we're at. So I believe I've shared, I believe I've shared with you that we made a few slight adjustments based on some feedback over the summer, one being that we've added the concept of belonging to the work we're doing around diversity, equity, inclusion. And so these again are our three big rocks, student support services, DEIB, and learning. And under those rocks are twenty-four indicators. There are strategic initiatives. I'm just gonna see, I'm hearing an echo. I'm gonna see if I can read where that might be coming from.
Neil, I think you got unmuted if you want to unmute.
Yeah, I think I, I, I think I may have muted that. So a lot of work has been done this year to focus on our alignment, trying to look at our district and school plans, our school improvement plans and our district plan, which this is, working with our leadership team and aligning our individual educator and administrator goals. Because this work doesn't get done by myself and Sean and Michael and Cynthia and Dan in an office or by our principals. It's done by all of our teachers, all of our staff working together. So that's been something we've really focused on. So just a few updates under teaching and learning. Using data to inform instruction, we've done a lot of conversations around what data we have and what data we need at each school or department. We spent a lot of time taking a real deep dive into some of our MCAS data and a lot of the other data that we have. And looked at the roles and responsibilities of our data leaders at each school and brought those data leaders into our leadership training. With technology infrastructure, we took some great, some great strides. Some of this was through some of the funding that we received through the state and through Representative Jones. And the funds that they were able to get for us, but we were able to enhance the interactive classroom technology at our schools. And we have a plan now for our secondary classrooms. We also, CIPC also supported us with this as well as our plan for wired and wireless infrastructure and our continued rollout of our student devices in the one-to-one program. And we've spent a lot of time looking at our course offerings. So you've seen some of these items that have been shared with you from the program of studies. And I, I did make that connection at our last meeting as well, that this has been a long time coming. Some of these additions, such as the AP Course in the Arts, really came through our, our subcommittee work and also through the visioning process for the district plan. And I'm just so thrilled to see it coming to fruition here. So really trying to have a range of options for all of our students. With our diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging, we have received a grant that we are getting ready to post some positions to be able to diversify our workforce. And we have some exciting ideas that we're hoping to be able to do in that direction. We have our new HR coordinator, Morgasaurus, who's done a wonderful job. She's really brought a new lens and a lot of expertise to our practices around hiring and interviewing and retaining and recruiting staff. So we've done a lot in that area this year, which was part of our goals. We've also had some forums with our families and communities through our K-12 Action Team. We've had our, our diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging subgroup of that has been really powerful. We've had some great ideas and some great discussion. We're leading towards some, some goals for the future. But it's also just been a great place to hear. And Mr. Colleen has, has really been leading that group and I've been in attendance and participating. And he and I were just reflecting over the day, we are hearing in that group from a variety of families. And in some of the voices are voices we haven't always heard from. And it's great to hear some of our, our folks that are sharing, not just from our school community, but from our community at large. So that's been great as well. And the climate and culture, we've, we've looked at our bathroom signage. That was something that was in the vision plan that came from a lot of feedback from, from many of our students to increase what that looks like at our school in terms of not only having the, the spaces that are safe, but also making sure everyone knows about them and that they're clearly posted. We've really been developing the culture of professional learning communities at each building. So taking that typical faculty meeting and turning it into something that our staff members find very, very useful. We've all seen the, the meme about, you know, this, this, this meeting could have been a memo or an email. And I think our principals have really taken that into their consideration. And they've worked it into some of their goals as well to really try and develop. And some of this came from their goals and, and we've adopted at the district. And some of it's been reinforced sort of two ways. But they really, in some exciting ways, offered some new opportunities for, for what that typical faculty or department meeting looks like. And to really dive deep into some of the idea of what we call a PLC or professional learning community, where it's driven by educators' interests and a community of learning. We have looked at our handbooks through an equity lens and we continue to do that. We certainly looked at dress code. We've implemented that this year. And we have really reviewed that process for responding to incidents of hate crimes. We still have work to do. We have, you know, every, every unfortunate incident or experience leads us to new learning. But I think we've, we've certainly learned and grown over the years. And we continue to have a approach where we're very clear in what we communicate out, that we have no tolerance for, for this kind of behavior and we're not going to let it go unaddressed. And we're going to speak to it and we're going to address it. And there was a recent incident at the high school that I think Mr. LaPret and his team have done a great job in responding and really turning it back to the students to listen to them and to hear some of their concerns and their feedback. And even we've received some feedback on our feedback, on, on our process. And we continue to listen to that so we can improve. Under students support services, we have piloted the disability awareness program at the elementary schools. And we have plans to grow and continue that into next year. That's our understanding our differences program that has come to us through the CPAC and some of their recommendations and their hard work to bring us that program. We've looked at the way we receive our data and we've really centralized a process for data with, excuse me, with our new student registration, new hires and changes to staffing. And we spent a lot of time at administrative council and also through our, our different professional learning days to talk about the multi-tiered system for supports, which is the program that we have a lot of in the student support services, Big Rock, to really talk about what we're doing for students in academics, in, in social emotional learning and also in behavior for, at the different tiers. So tier one instruction being for all students and then tier two and three supports as needed for others. And then we've done, you've heard me talk a lot about our cybersecurity work. Our teachers have really done a great job with that. All of our staff have done a great job with that. And we're going to continue this program in a, in a modified way in the future. But I just want to share some of the results. We've had over three hundred and twenty-five employees who've completed the entire program. Eighty percent of the staff completed the initial set assessment, which versus only about sixty-nine percent of the state. Seventy-four percent have completed the final assessment. So we only required them to do the first assessment, the first module. And we, we had this high number of people who went through and completed the program, which is much higher than the state average. And most importantly, I think we've had, they do these campaigns where they send out phishing emails sort of to test our staff to see if they click on something they shouldn't. And we've had a zero percent failure rate. And I think that's due in large part to the training and practice. And Mr. Hardery, for example, brings into me, he'll print them out because he's sort of old school in that way. But he'll print out the phishing emails he gets about, you know, a teacher will, you know, quote unquote, teacher will write to him and say, "Mr. Hardery, can you please reroute my, my bank account so that you can transfer my funds to this account?" And so, you know, we've really had our staff respond to these very well. And so there's a couple of places where we had a few clicks, but really the state average, when you compare them, gets as high as five percent on some of the exercises. So the fact that we've had such low numbers is, is great. And we do have to continue the work because the, the threats keep evolving. So we're going to continue looking at MTSS and our diversity work as well with our administrators and ourselves, and then also with our staff. And then we do, we, we are continuing as we move down the line into the years to think about what this work looks like as we do it with students. We are bringing back what was called parent university. But one of the great suggestions that came through our last K-12 Action Team meeting was to have it family university because it's not really just for parents. There may be caregivers or guardians who are home, who are part of the family. And we want to make sure we're engaging everyone. And it also speaks to engaging our students in different ways too. So I, I like that rebranding and that concept. That's going to be on March twenty-fifth, and I'm going to be sending out a save the date very soon about that. At the end of this year, we're going to review our progress and make revisions. So that's what we always do. We look at our, our outputs and our outcomes and our intended actions and review them. And then in our leadership retreat, we, we reframe and think about what we need to focus on for twenty-three, twenty-four. So all of the documents that I shared earlier with our one pager will be updated. So just to show that again, we have all the goals for twenty-two, twenty-three listed there. And you can click on things and see exactly what's happening for this year that will all get updated for the future. So just wanted to share this as an update.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Jeff?
Yeah, you mentioned in the DEIB section that you got a lot of feedback. And we're getting feedback from, from people that you didn't necessarily, hadn't necessarily heard from before. What, were there any unique or interesting takeaways from hearing those additional voices? And there may not have been, but just curious.
No, it really is. And I think it's, if Sean's on and he wants to speak to it as well. But I think we're hearing from some of the marginalized voices in our community. And I think the first, what I've learned is the first thing we need to do is provide a forum where they feel that they will be listened to and that they, they have a, a comfort level to bring forward their ideas. I think we have a lot of work to do to build that up. And I think, you know, some of the, the real advocates, I would say, for, for this work shared with me and, and with Sean and others that, you know, just because we're not hearing something doesn't mean it's not a, a concern. And so we need to give that time and we need to give that, that forum for folks to speak. And one thing I've noticed, and I think some of those voices and those advocates would be proud, they're able to, they're not speaking as loud at some of the meetings. There's many more voices now that are sharing ideas and reinforcing some of the, the thoughts that are out there and speaking, speaking for the community. Sean, I know you're on the call. Do you want to share anything that you've observed?
No, I think that that kind of summarizes some of the detailed work that is coming from. I, I appreciate the feedback from the different members of the committee, not only representing what are probably areas closer to their interest, but representing, you know, the other groups, marginalized groups and, and the perspective of, of what our public schools are, can and can't do. So helping us guide and, and make those next steps to make sure that our schools or places where all students and all families feel like they belong and know how to access support when needed.
And I, I'll just add too, I, I think this might be what you're saying as well. But, you know, we have a, a why, a diverse group. And when I think of a spectrum of people that are very progressive in ideas and more conservative, I think we have some good representatives of both. I think there's some people there that want to make sure that we're not going off the rails or doing some of the things that they've heard where schools might be going too far. And others that are making sure that we're, you know, being representative of needs. And I think that's important for us to, to consistently get that perspective because I know that that's representative of, of our parents and families that are out there. So I think that's really important. And Ms. Barrows certainly is very much involved in, in this work, in this group as well. So.
Thank you. Rich? Rich, are you muted?
Do you want to type?
While he's typing, I'll ask a While he's typing, I'll ask a quick question on cybersecurity. It said that 80% started the initial and 74% finished. Is that not a required thing for the cybersecurity? And if not, why is it not a required training for anybody using, you know, anybody in in North Reading Public Schools?
Yeah, it's it's essentially required. That accounts, there are some new hires that come in and some folks that, you know, we did, it's sort of a friendly reminder is what the way I've done it. We've given some time for folks to work on it. But there are some who who did not end up completing it. But it is something that we did try to require of every single employee in the district. And we did share that with them and give them some time to work on it. So 100% is what I'd like to see. And and what's what's interesting, you know, we've had this conversation that I know there's some folks that are not as tech savvy who, it's a little bit harder for them to to get on the computer and do some of the work. But at the same time, those are the folks that are most, I shouldn't say most likely, but very likely to maybe make a mistake because they're not as tech savvy and they're not on the computer that often, right? So I think that's a goal we have is to try to get those numbers higher over time. I think what I'm going to really try to do with this program or with a similar program is try to customize it and streamline it a little bit. This this was very intensive. There were a lot of time. This took multiple hours to complete. And so we gave the time for folks to do the first module. And then on their own, if they wanted to, we gave some incentives, but they were able to complete the rest of the modules. So we always have said that this work is not just for protecting our schools and our students and our computers and our our systems, but it's also beneficial for them at home. Everything from their personal finances to using, you know, the Wi-Fi at the airport to, you know, getting a call or an email that that's suspicious at home. And I've also, I continue to talk to the state about trying to bring this to our students and also to bring it to the community because I think it's so important. I would love my parents to have done these modules and they are working on something, so.
Thank you. Yeah, that was that was literally my point is if if one, if a quarter of people aren't doing it, those are maybe the quarter that we want to make sure are doing it, so. And I see Rich typed in, hope the experience of making space for those diverse, yeah, diverse voices can be applied to economic diversity as well. I'm always worried that families that struggle financially don't feel comfortable asking for help with various financial needs within the schools, fees, trips, et cetera.
I think that's really important to to continue to consider.
Other comments or questions on N R P S?
We, I'll just say that we are working on a survey through that group and we may get at some of those questions as well in that survey to try to give people a voice in that in that forum.
Okay, thank you. We don't need to vote on this or anything. We're going to go to minutes. Diana, do you want to lead us in the minutes? And if Rich, if your if your speakers aren't working, we'll accept a thumbs up as an aye, a thumbs down as a no, or I guess this is nothing abstain.
All right. I'll go ahead. So I move to approve the open session minutes of the school committee for January 9th, 2023, as written.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any comments? Okay, roll call vote. Diana?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Rich? He's an aye. I'm an aye as well. Passes five to zero. I think that's all we have. Budget update? None at this time?
Correct.
Okay, and staffing update? None at this time?
None at this time.
Okay. Bids and donations, since Mr. McGowan is muted. Mr. Friedman, would you mind leading us in? Are you reading the donations? Do you have them in front of you?
I do not have them. I'll have to pull them up. You'll have to give me a minute.
I can put them on, I can put them on the screen here, too, if you can see. I'm moving too quickly, but it's right there. There you go.
Yeah, there's no chance I could read that.
I I think I have, wait, I think I have them out. Hold on. No, I thought I did. Let me scroll.
Is it coming up too small?
It's, for me, that's.
We can make them.
For me, that's too small without glasses on. Sorry.
I can read them if we need to, if nobody has them.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, I got the, I have three of these windows open. I had the other one blown up. Sorry, this should be better. How's that?
I have, I have, so are these the one, the donations from like the parents associations and things like that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, well, you guys have to help me remember what to say, but.
Well, if you just read where it says recommended motion, just read.
Okay, yeah, here we go. Oh, there we go. I got it. Thank you. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $500 from the Hood School Parents Association to help fund the fifth grade field trip to Kimball Farm.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote. Noel?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Rich? He's an aye. I'm an aye as well. Passes five zero.
Okay, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a refund donation of $250 from Ms. Sarah McGoldrick to be donated back to the school.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Noel?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Rich? Rich is an aye. I'm an aye as well. Passes five zero.
All right, this one, the I move that the school committee vote to approve a CSHS affiliate grant of $30,000 to support the expenses as recommended by the administration for fiscal year 2023.
Second.
Okay, and for discussion, Michael, do you want to just maybe explain what this is?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Buckley. So as the memo describes, we actually certainly thank lead nurse, Colleen Resker, who I think took the, along with Cynthia Conant, in seeking and applying for this grant opportunity. And we were pleased to find out recently that North Reading did, you know, was awarded this, you know, CSHS grant. The $30,000 would be spent on substitute coverage for nurses when they are conducting their mandated screenings. They do plan to do some some health room, social and emotional classroom lessons. So this would provide coverage for for that type of activity as well as if they go to professional development programs, the coverage would be paid for by this grant. So that certainly helps, you know, shift funds that may have been spent through the general fund. They're also going to purchase health-related materials in all languages as part of their nursing goals for equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging. And they do have some ideas to help purchase some equipment to enhance the quality of the nurses and health offices. But I know this grant was was a complicated application process through the state's kind of compised website and program. And I know Ms. Ms. Resker, the Colleen Resker, who is the lead nurse, was very kind of persevered through through the application process. And we're we're very pleased to see that this was awarded.
Thank you very much, Mr. Connolly. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any word of discussion? We'll do roll call vote. Noel?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Rich? I'm an aye, Rich is an aye and I'm an aye as well. Passes five zero. And thank you, Mr. Connolly, for putting that in there. That was a good discussion or a good suggestion last time by Rich, so thank you. I think that was all of them, right?
There's one more.
One more, sorry.
Yep, I move that the school committee vote to approve a financial literacy planning and implementation grant of $60,000 to support the expenses as recommended by the administration for fiscal year 2023.
Second.
Okay, and again, Mr. Connolly, any any further comments on this?
So I think Dr. Dale took the lead on this one.
Yeah, this is the grant that I had actually shared, this one and the one after this last meeting. And we put it in this new format and it's under this new agenda item. So this is our second year of the financial literacy planning. We're excited to have the staff members who came together last year to create the units and lessons come back and work with teachers in those ELCs, professional learning communities I mentioned earlier in in the best way to fit this into our curriculum. So we're really excited about this important work getting done in our schools.
Thank you. I did remember it. I just figured I'd have it on the record in this meeting, too, so. Okay, we have the motion and the second. Any word of discussion? Roll call vote. Noel?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Rich? Rich is an aye. I'm an aye as well. Passes five zero.
And one more. I move that the school committee vote to approve a teacher diversification pilot program implementation grant of $19,808 to support the expenses as recommended by the administration for fiscal year 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If we want to just quickly comment on purpose of this one as well?
Sure, and this I alluded to in my last presentation. So this is money from the Department of Education that will help us to, we can fund some relocation costs or some tuition costs to encourage parents or teachers to earn additional licensure or to work towards their schooling. And we're going to target diverse candidates and try to, you know, make North Reading a very attractive place for them to work. So we're excited about that opportunity.
Thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second. So we'll do a vote. Noel?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Rich? Rich is an aye and I'm an aye as well. Thank you. Passes five zero. And we're good. And then that's the bids and donations and the grants. We go to subcommittee updates. Athletic Subcommittee will give an update. And since Mr. McGowan is muted, we will have, this is about well, give our update.
I was not in attendance, so I cannot, I apologize.
We'll give the update.
Sure, so we talked about many different things. Basically, a lot of updates on the different projects that are going on. We have our scoreboard project, which we are hopeful that will happen later this week, if I'm not mistaken, Michael, right?
Yes, it's actually supposed to happen on Thursday, so we're excited about that. It's a long, long time coming. But we're excited that that will occur. Hopefully, we completed during the the day on Thursday. We'll try to minimize any impact to the, you know, the the pickup and drop off area, which that's the plan. But and then we did receive some sponsorships from some some organizations and some local businesses. So we'll, we'll try to address the next step of that once that scoreboard's finally installed.
Right, we also are taking the next steps with our backstop project also, which we're very excited about that coming through. We did receive some of the bids back for the turf field project. And so there's some questions around some additional funding sources that are needed. There's about $36,000 or so that we need to come up with. And I think the select board's also talking about that a little bit tonight, about some different ideas about how to come up with a shortfall for the cost of the project. We want to make sure that that project also includes lining that field for all of the sports, field hockey, lacrosse, soccer, baseball. We want to make sure that that's in there. And we actually feel that in the long run, that there'd be a cost savings not having to line that field all the time. And also is just sort of ready and designed from the get-go. The other piece of it that we strongly feel would be representative, not only of our schools but of our entire community, is to have that Hornet logo on the field. We think that, you know, when going to other communities and seeing their new turf projects and really just how it it really pops out when you see that that school logo. I think that obviously the Hornet is the symbol of the North Reading Public Schools. But I think a lot of our youth programs are all future Hornets. And a lot of people that are coaching and driving by and participating and cheering them on are a lot of them are former Hornets. And so we think that logo is is an important piece that we hope that we're able to find a way to support.
I could just add on to that, just briefly, Dr. Daley, don't mind. So I know with the, as Dr. Daley mentioned, the select board is going to discuss this this item this evening. I believe the town administrator is going to make a recommendation or to speak to the the possibility of using some of the AWPer funds to fund the difference of this project, the 36,000. So I believe it was 16,000 of that was sort of the base, the base bid that we were short. And then there was about $4,500 for some additional lining to have all sports lined and represented, which was bid alternate number one, which we feel is, everyone I think feels is important. And then the bid alternate number two was $15,000 for the logo. So I, you know, if there is a possibility that everything was sort of awarded through AWPer, through the select board tonight, I have had conversations with Marty Tilton on, you know, what would we, would we be willing to try to use some of the enterprise or revolving funds that could be available at the end of the year to to split the difference of the logo? And I just wanted to see if if that were to play out, would would the committee kind of endorse something like that?
What what are those funds from, Michael, and what are they set to be used for?
This would be our year, projected year-end balance in the athletic revolving fund, as well as the the Parks and Recs, potentially some of their balance or retained earnings that they would carry over from their enterprise fund. Or I actually think they would actually pursue the Friends of Parks and Rec to help to maybe fund the difference in their their Friends of account.
What's the balance on that account right now and what are we, do you know what we're talking about in terms of?
The athletic revolving account?
Yeah.
So we have our, I presented an update that we would have a projected balance. If everything goes well over the next four or five months of, we would end with about $45,000 at the end of this, end of this fiscal year.
And do you know how much, if we split it, how much that would be?
So if we split it down the middle, it would be about $7,500 apiece.
Thoughts, anybody? Diana, you're on the Athletic Subcommittee. I'll turn to you first.
No, I I think it's important, so I I support it 100%. It's just a matter of figuring out the details.
Any else thoughts? Noel, Jeff? Rich?
I agree. I I love the idea. And, yeah, as a former Hornet especially.
Rich said agreed. I think this is important. Jeff?
Yeah, agreed. Agreed.
My only concern is what else it's used for, and I hate, you know, not, you know, there's fees and things like that. But if we have the funds and, you know, it's a one-time expense and it's to get it done, I don't, I don't have any op, any huge opposition to it.
I appreciate that. Reason why I'm asking is we might have to move kind of quickly after Monday just to make sure everything gets ordered and they have to work everything into the into the plan. So there might not be a lot of time, but so I appreciate that. And I I would agree. And, you know, I think it's something that's going to be there for at least 15 more years. And for that amount of money, and hopefully everything goes through tonight. But, you know, I think we would, I wouldn't want to regret regret it. And for the next 15 years, every time we look at the field, I think that would really, really enhance, enhance the the aesthetics. And I, and so I appreciate it.
Okay. Anything else from Athletic Subcommittee, Dr. Daley?
I think those were the major pieces. We get an update, obviously, on the winter sports and looking ahead to the spring. Don't believe there's any eighth grade waivers coming up for the spring, but that's always, you know, to keep it in mind. If you look at the numbers for winter sports teams are doing well. We had, you heard an update earlier, we had our our girls' track program win the, they came in first and the boys came in second. So really, just great success, continuing across the boards.
Well, just since you brought up the waivers, I mean, what were the numbers for hockey this year for boys? And for, I know the girls have a co-op with other schools. Do you know how many North Reading girls are playing in that one and how many boys are playing on the North Reading team? Off the top of your head, if you don't, that's fine, too.
I don't. I know, I know there's a, I think there's only a one or maybe two student eighth graders that ended up playing on the hockey. And and some of them are doing very well. So.
Yeah, just want to make sure going forward that we have the numbers to support that program. And we don't need to, because I would hate to not have the numbers and have to cut a program at some point in time if we should be thinking about seeing if other other schools would want to combine before then. Again, if this is just a low enrollment for a year or two, perfectly fine. I know that, again, I think I think next year we're projecting fewer students in the high school again. And just, just want to make sure that we're not, because I would hate to not have enough to support a program some year and kids can't play, so.
I agree. I think I think we've had success with the call. I agree. I think, I think we've had success with the co-op models and different programs. And I think, um, we certainly would go to that before we started talking about.
Okay.
Eliminating.
Yeah. I just didn't know how long in advance we'd need for that. Like if, yeah, okay. Um, Fine Arts Club Committee, Noel or Dr. Daley?
Yeah, I'm happy. Um, I'm happy to report. Um, so let's see. Um, we, uh, there was some discussion. I don't know where we landed. And I don't know how relevant it is to the Fine Arts Committee, but, um, about the, um, the PAC, um, being used, um, for the different needs versus town, um, town meeting. Um, Patrick was there. Have, has that, any decision been made there?
Uh, that, that's all happening concurrently. So they're on the other channel. We, uh, so we're just, we did talk a lot about that. It's sort of, it's tied into this year, but it's also tied to the vision for the future and about the, you know, using the gym, using the, the, um, performing arts, some enhancements we want to do in the Performing Arts Center. Um, and also the time and expertise of a limited number of people that know how to use all the equipment. They're trying to make the best experience for everyone. So it was a good discussion.
Yep. Um, and going along with that, um, an update on the screen and the TV, um, center up, um, that the, I guess the screen in the PAC needs to be replaced. Um, but they, um, Mrs. Kane believes that it can be done perhaps much more inexpensively by over the summer, taking it down, using some equipment and potentially repairing the motor, um, and saving, um, you know, upwards of $30,000 in the process. So that's going to happen sometime this summer. Um, also in regards to the sound system, um, she, as in, um, when I say she, Mrs. Kane, is getting, um, the budget for a new soundboard, um, that will be covered by donations from, uh, Friends of Maskers, uh, Hornet Productions. And, um, also an anonymous do, uh, donor, um, put some money forward there. Um, the ballpark for that, I think, was around 31,000. Um, did I miss anything there, Dr. Daley?
There's a map. You know, we're also, there's a, uh, Michael's going to work, has been working with us as well to try to support, um, some of those enhancements for the PAC. And then with the screen, just to, just to comment that, you know, we, we, it's at least worth a try to try to see if we can get that. It's a large screen. It's heavy. Um, but we feel that if we look at it and try to, uh, because like she said, the screen itself isn't damaged. It's just the motor. And, um, everyone we speak to is really in the business of selling us screens. And we're just trying to get someone to look at the motor. And so we, we might try it ourselves. Um, and we, you know, our, our Buildings and Grounds team has looked at it. When we've had a similar issue in the DLL, much smaller scale, much smaller screen. But what, we, we've been able to save quite a bit by just doing it in-house. And so we're going to give it at least a try, um, with the larger screen. But we have to do it, obviously, at a time when the, the center's not being used. So over the summer. So that's our goal.
Um, yeah, no, it seems, it seems like a very reasonable way to save money. Um, so, um, also we discussed, um, again, the, um, interest in purchasing of an additional van, um, with some input also from, um, you know, support from the music and theater department. Just they really, with their notorious and the traveling that they're doing, they're really needing extra transportation. So that was something that was, um, discussed to sort of give them access priority to a van. Um.
I think the van needs to become a voting member on the board because everybody seems to bring up the van every meeting.
Yeah.
A lot of airtime vans. So, but, but it is important. I think it was definitely discussed.
Yeah. Yeah. And they're certainly traveling a lot. Um, and then, uh, the, um, the, the hood and the little are going to go ahead with, um, the musicals, um, for this spring. Um, the batch is going to do that next year. So going back to the pre-COVID, um, idea of, of two schools, one year and one school the next year. Um, so the hood musical is in March and the little school musical is in June. Um, and those are going to be held at the PAC as well. Um, so a really good opportunity for kids, um, to participate in elementary schools. Um, and that was about it. Um, a little bit more discussion, um, of the, a, um, of the 2D, um, art AP class that we discussed the last meeting, um, and just sort of fleshing out what that would look like and how, what that would look like, um, in terms of, um, it being run concurrently with the, um, portfolio class. Um, and then one final discussion we had that I thought was sort of interesting was the idea of at the end of the, um, or when, when college, um, acceptances are coming in and kids are, um, getting accepted in, into sports programs. And they have like the photo that's like the official photo with the jersey and the, and the, the college that they're going to, to do something similar for the arts. Um, especially if it was something that was, um, a difficult, um, audition process or an application process. And so just sort of starting to talk about that in terms of it's not just the, the kids who are getting, um, into the sports programs that are recognized, but also perhaps the arts and just what that would look like.
That's a great idea.
I think that was about it. Um, oh yeah, the high school is doing their, um, act, um, one act show. I thought it was pretty cool because they are, um, it's a, it's a Scottish, um, play and it's about boxing. So they're training at McNally's Boxing Gym in North Reading. So it's pretty cool. From acrobatics to boxing.
I was picking at my son the other day and I saw kids down in Mrs. Kane's room boxing. I was wondering what it was about, not hitting each other, but going, you know, fake airboxing. Um, Budget Subcommittee also met this week. Um, and I'll give a, I mean, quick update. Patrick and Michael have done a great job to put together a first draft of a budget. I give a few annoying requests that they're going to honor and just in how it's getting presented a little bit. And so I think they'll be revising that slightly. And then probably, I think Michael probably you said mid-February, we'd have our budget books?
Correct. That's still the, the goal right now. Yep. So still, yeah.
Okay. Um, any other, any other subcommittees meet?
No, and I'll add that one in. I, I just forgot. I did remember, then I forgot to put that one in.
Um, CI PC did meet last week. I think, um, just quick update, we're getting to the end of the presentations. Um, and there's a meeting scheduled, um, I believe next week, is that right? Coming, coming up to, to kind of start to think about next steps and when we would try to prioritize and, and, and rank and vote. But we're a little ahead of schedule. Um, so, but that process is still moving along.
Thought. Thank you. Um, upcoming subcommittees, Fight Explain Team is meeting on February 3rd at 8:15 a.m. Athletic Subcommittee is meeting on March 8th at noon. And Fine Arts Subcommittee is meeting on March 8th at 3:15 p.m. Administrative report, Dr. Daley?
Just very briefly, um, I was wanting to share again, what I mentioned earlier, there's a family university that we're going to have coming up on March 25th, 2023, that will likely be in the morning. Um, we'll probably have a keynote speaker and someone will, um, we're, we're thinking around, uh, nine to 12, eight to 11, somewhere around there. We're, we're fine tuning it right now. Mr. Kleen and I are working on that. And that'll be coming up very soon. Um, there'll be a keynote, some breakout groups. And also we're going to have, um, our plan is to solicit some feedback, um, in the form of a survey to, to families to help us inform some of the, the items that are included. But it's all going to be related to our three big rocks of NRPS 2025 and the, certainly the community voice piece, um, through there. And then I just wanted to share that I've also shared out, um, tomorrow morning, the plan is to have a, a district-wide Alice drill. And I say the word drill, but I've been using the word, um, a discussion-based exercise. We've, there's been a lot of research in recent years about the, the trauma-informed decision-making, um, and really to try to avoid running an actual driller scenario in a school, uh, that, that many of the same outcomes can be achieved through, um, thoughtful discussion about what we would do in this moment, given this scenario. So our school safety team has developed some scenarios and two of those scenarios will be shared tomorrow. They're the same scenario, K to 12, but they are, um, each teacher is going to, uh, work on them with the student. So at the high school, they probably would be using the scenario as written. The middle school, it might be modified a little bit through the discussion. And at the elementary school, it's going to be something like, um, you know, we see a stranger, what should we do? So they're going to have some of the same details because we want the adults to know the full details and to respond and react because some of the decisions are made by the adults. But some of the decisions are also made by the students. And so the idea of this is it's, it's random. Um, we're, for this first one, we've agreed that there's going to be one date and an approximate time. And we've given advanced notice to families so that if they do have questions, they can reach out to the school. Um, but the idea is that it really needs to be in that moment. We don't, we really don't want teachers to, you know, not plan a test or to not use the distance learning lab or to make sure that they're not, um, you know, in, in between halls in a passing time. We really want it to be whatever happens at that moment. Everyone makes the decision based on that moment. And it's unfortunate that we have to even think about this, but I do think that, you know, we certainly believe that the more we talk about it, the more we think about it and take those moments to step back and reflect, the safer we will be. And so I just want to always thank our school safety team, North Reading Police and Fire Department, and especially our school administrators, um, who have worked so hard to develop this for us. So that is tomorrow. Are there any questions about that?
Thank you. My, my, my only question would be if there's, how many parents have taken you up on the opportunity to reach out about questions? I mean, do you get a lot of questions or?
We haven't. No, I haven't, um, checked in with the schools, um, today on that. But, um, I sent this out, I believe, on Thursday or Friday of last week. So we would imagine there would be a few, but we, we hope by giving advanced notice and by really explaining what it's going to be like. I also shared some resources for those to review Alice and also to review, um, if they wanted to preview this with their children, um, that they could use some of those resources. There's resources for parents. And within that link was also the resources for schools. They could get a sense of, um, some of the ways we'll be talking about it as well. So I do think there may be, what, what we anticipated was there may be someone who would be concerned about, um, trauma, that they might call the school and ask the question of, um, you know, are there going to be any references to this or that? Or would there be any simulated gunfire or something? And we could answer those questions appropriately. We're, we're purposely keeping the scenario itself. Um, that's not something that we're sharing widely, but we, we should be able to answer those questions. And, um, you know, I think this is something we've done. And, and along with that, we've throughout the year been publishing sort of an overview of all of our trainings and drills, not just for Alice, but also for fire drills and other safety, um, measures as well. Evacuations, gas leaks, those type. So we have two upcoming fire drills and we may do some scenarios with those as well when the time comes.
Okay. Any other questions? Very none? No correspondence, Dr. Daley?
Uh, none at this time. I did share out so, an interesting, uh, legal message from the ACLU that I thought some of you might be interested in. And, um, I shared that out. That wasn't necessarily to the school committee, but I thought it was of, of interest to everyone.
Um, okay. In future business, we have a meeting on February 13th at 6:30 p.m. We have a meeting on Monday, February 27th at 6:30 p.m. And then Monday, March 13th at 6:30 p.m. Is that, is that when the hood school, is that going to be at the hood school?
I was going to say that is the plan. That one would be at the hood school. Yes. And then we would go to the little as well and the batch this year as well.
This time I'll try and go to the right school.
I was just going to insert a question, a, a comment there, Jeff. Okay. If there's nothing more, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Second, Diana will say. So hearing no discussion. Jeff?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Noel?
Aye.
Rich? We can't hear from Rich. We're going to stay in session. Okay. Aye, aye, aye. Aye from Rich, aye from me. Thank you, everyone. Passes by zero. Have a good night, everyone.